I'm going to call this meeting to order tonight. The first thing that we have is a spotlight and it is for students on our Quiz Bowl team. I should say first, this is Monday, April 13th, if you're watching it on a delayed time. And we're recognizing to begin with students on our Quiz Bowl, but we don't have the students here. We do have an ever youthful Bruce McLean though, who is going to come to the podium and talk to us about Quiz Bowl and the students. And I'll bring the certificates up to you.
Thanks. We had various -- my name's Bruce McLean. I'm a retired teacher at St. Louis Park and I did the Quiz Bowl when I was here. So they kind of forced me out of retirement this fall when they couldn't find anybody else to take the Quiz Bowl team. But I was glad to do it because Quiz Bowl is always fun. It's a great experience for the kids. One kid kind of said, you know, "It's a place I can go where I don't have to be afraid that I'm smart." And so it's a -- practice is always fun, the tournaments are always fun, and the kids have a real good time doing it. So I was more than glad to come back and do it. We had an excellent team this year. I'll introduce the A-Team members in a second. There are basically kind of two state tournaments that are held during the season. One's at Burnsville and we ended up tied for sixth in that one. And then there was one at Eastview, which is also kind of a semi-state tournament, and we tied for ninth in that one. And the kids performed very well. We have a tradition of having very good Quiz Bowl teams at St. Louis Park. I was telling someone earlier, at one point in time, the Stanford University Quiz Bowl team was entirely made up of four St. Louis Park students. So I've always thought that was pretty impressive. The Team A players this year, we had about 15 members total on the Quiz Bowl team and four, five students participated for the A-Team. Aaron Goodman was our -- and to have a good Quiz Bowl team, you need good balance. You need a math person, you need a science person. Aaron Goodman was our sports person. Anytime a sports question came up, he perked up and he got all those. So we always kind of counted on Aaron because these other guys on the A-Team knew nothing about sports. So Aaron was very good for that. Spencer Anderson was one of our A-Team players. His main area was geography. I think he won the Geography B in eighth grade and represented St. Louis Park at the Minnesota State Geography B. And he was excellent in the geography questions and in lots of other areas as well. So he did a great job. David Hope was one of our representatives. He was more in the science area, that he kind of came through with our areas, and kind of an all-around player as well. Peter Johnson was one of our captains this year. And again, geography and literature and all-around areas were sort of his strength that he did for us. And probably our strongest player, he ended up, they tabulate points during our tournaments that we have at Eden Prairie High School. And I think Elliot Schwartz ended up out of about maybe 30 teams, fourth, the fourth highest scorer in the Quiz Bowl tournaments at Eden Prairie High School. And so he did an excellent job. And I don't think I've ever had someone who knew literature as well as Elliot Schwartz did. He was absolutely amazing on literature and English and also overall as well. The one thing we lacked was a real math whiz, so we're always trying to get to the math team to give us somebody good in math. But we haven't had a good math person for the last few years. But it was a successful season and the kids had a good time. We qualified for Nationals, which we kind of almost do every year, but for some reason this group really wants to go. And so right now, we're on a waiting list to go. It also costs $650 if we do get in. So if the board wants to kick in, $650 if we get into the tournament, that would be great. But we'll kind of see how we do. That's held in Chicago the week after Memorial Day. But thanks.
Don't run, don't run yet.
Can they letter in Quiz Bowl now?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. And most of them will have lettered in something else, but they put a Quiz Bowl thing on there as well. So, yep.
Anybody else have any questions for Bruce before he runs?
Is $650 the registration fee or per student travel fee?
The registration fee for the tournament. That's no travel at all. Or they would pay their own travel and their own accommodations, but it's $650 registration fee.
Superintendent just said we can cover it.
Oh, really? Well, that'd be great. I should have asked you earlier because then we could have --
(laughter)
Because we were in and then, you know, and if we had to cancel, because if you didn't cancel, you owed 300 anyways. So we canceled. But I'll tell the kids then. So hopefully we'll keep moving up the waiting list. We're 10 right now, so I'll let you know.
Bruce, I just want to thank you for coming back. And again, I just think it shows what our teachers do in St. Louis Park. You come back, you coach your kids, you're a wonderful role model. You've just done some great things for St. Louis Park, and for you to keep coming back is greatly appreciated.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's, like I said, Quiz Bowl is always fun, so it's really kind of no burden at all to come back. Because they're great kids and they have a lot of fun and they're fun to hang around with. Thanks.
No, one more?
I'm sorry.
I was going to just echo Bruce's thought. You still come to sporting events and, you know, you're a familiar face, the kids know you, and it's just nice to see the support and giving back to the community, even though you gave an awful lot for the years you were here to some of us personally too. And so that is appreciated and it's great just to be a resource there. Kids need a coach, you stepped up and I appreciate that.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce, and congratulations to the students. We wish them the best. We hope they get into the national tournament and that they do well and have a great time in Chicago.
All right. I'll let them know you got them.
Sue. Okay. So the next thing is approval of the agenda. The agenda includes the superintendent's report, discussion items. We have the Susan Lindgren Annual Report, Strategic Plan Update, 2016 Integration Grant Request for Approval, and Policy Development First Reading. Then on the Action Agenda, we've got approval of the 2016 Integration Grant. We've got Communications and Transmittals. And colleagues on the board, we want to reschedule the listening session that didn't happen, so look at the dates that are out here and hopefully you've got some thoughts on which one might work best, at least whether you personally are available. And then the last item on the agenda is adjournment. Motion to approve the agenda. Moved by Bruce.
Sorry.
Second, I heard from Jim first. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The agenda is approved and we'll go to the first item, the superintendent's report. Superintendent Metz?
Good evening, board members. I have two items I'd like to address tonight. The first is the closing of the Minnetoka Bridge over Highway 100. We were very concerned when this bridge was going to be closed and demolished about our bus routes. And actually, so far, it's been pretty good news. Many of our bus routes have had to change, but our bus company did an excellent job preparing. I think our communications department in the school district, Sarah Thompson and others, did a great job of communicating. And the buses have been pretty much on time. So no big disruption in buses getting to school on time or getting home on time, and that's really good news. I think one of the secrets to the success is that many of the bus drivers that work for the bus company live in St. Louis Park or have lived in St. Louis Park. They've been with this bus company for a long time. They know their way around. They know a lot of the students personally and that's been a big advantage. So I want to just thank the bus company. Now, we have had some issues with car traffic. That's been two places mostly near here. The first is near McDonald's on 33rd and Lake Street. There's a four-way stop there and that's a slow go. Takes a lot of patience to get through that corner. The one that's more concerning is the Wooddale Exit and Bridge over Highway 7, which is actually a pretty dangerous situation right now. We have been communicating with the city. They communicate with MINDOT regularly. Park Spanish Immersion is the school that's the most affected and we've been communicating with parents at PSI through the normal processes that Principal Misodolski uses there. So a lot of communicating going on, but you know, that's a corner that's the most problematic, I think, for us. But the good news is that in general, the bus routes have not been greatly affected. So good work by the bus company and all involved. Second item I wanted to touch on is the high school principal hiring process. Last Thursday, we had facilitators here at the high school that interviewed or actually listened to students and then staff and then parents and community members, gathering their ideas about the skills and qualities they'd like to see in the next high school principal. This Thursday will be the Round One Interviews. So the first round of candidates will be here. Traditional interview team has been organized and we'll do the first round interviews on Tuesday. A couple of weeks from now, date not yet set, but near the end of April, there'll be a second round of interviews for the finalists. That will have some sort of an open process where community members can come and be involved in that. And as I said, that date is not yet set, but it will be soon. So I just wanted to bring the board members and the community up to date with the process.
Okay. Those are two big items and I'm pleased to hear on the buses. Turning right coming out of PSI might be okay, but turning left is probably impossible. So let's go on to the first discussion item, and that's the Susan Lindgren Annual Report. We have Frank Johnson, the principal, here to give his report on Susan Lindgren.
Okay. What's? Okay. Thank you for having me. This is kind of a report on last year and this year sort of together. It's our annual report. We're an IB school and within the context of being an I-BB school, we are in alignment with the district's Equity Plan, World's Best Workforce, Read Well by Third Grade, which is our district's reading plan, K5, our new principal and teacher evaluation plan, Q-COM, and our district career and readiness plan. If you look at who we are, these are our demographics, but they're by percent. It makes it look like we are losing white children and gaining black and brown children. In fact, our white children are staying even. Our school is growing and we have more black and brown children, more EL kids, more black students. The number of white children is the same number. It's hard to believe that in three years in a row, you could have the same number, but we do. Other demographics show that we're increasing in EL. We're also increasing in GT. Nineteen percent of our kids score above the 95th percentile in reading or math, which is pretty significant.
What percent?
It's 19 percent.
Ninety-fifth?
Above the 95th percentile. Yep. It's 107 kids in grades two through five. So it's a lot of kids. Last year, and this is our MCA scores from last year, we focused as a school on reading. We had done really well in math the year before and decided to put our efforts into reading. And while we increased the percentage of kids proficient from 66 to 72 on the state test, we're disappointed that our black and brown gap grew. So you can see both of those gaps growing in relation to the white students. In math, our numbers stayed almost constant. The second line down is everybody. It went from 71 to 69, which is probably within statistical error. So it stayed about the same. But again, our black and brown gaps increased, which is disappointing to us. If you look at what's been going on this year, our January MAP testing would say that we're gaining with white and Hispanic students and we're losing ground with black students. So actually, seven percent fewer black students passed the test in January as in September. There's a possibility of how that happened and you should know that we just had the most bogus situation with reading intervention this fall that I've ever experienced. We hired a teacher in August who needed to spend three weeks learning our system and the day she was supposed to start teaching children, she came and resigned. And so we had no licensed people to interview left. We posted again and went through the whole process and it was December before we were able to hire a person to do it. So the whole fall really did not have a reading intervention teacher for our third, fourth, and fifth graders. And it's just a bogus, weird situation that happened. In math, we're gaining with white students but losing ground with black and holding even with our Hispanic students. If you look at making typical growth, it's a difficult thing to explain. I'll just say that in the world of MAP testing, MAP would predict that 50 percent of your students are going to make typical growth. So anything above 50 percent is considered good. So if you look at these bars, all of the bars are above 50 percent except for our black students in math. So we're making good growth except for our black students in math according to the MAP test this winter. According to the FAST test in reading this winter, the percentage of our kids who will pass in all categories of the MCA this spring will increase. So I hope the FAST is right. We do the FAST weekly for the kids who are struggling and it causes us to really focus on those kids. I hope we're doing well there. Last year, we did a lot of work in literacy. We changed our EL materials. We maintained our home reading material. We adopted a new writing curriculum. We put ALD descriptors into our units of inquiry. ALDs are descriptors of what learning looks like. So if you say writes a narrative sentence, a sentence that's three words long might turn out to be low. A five-word sentence might turn out to be average. You end up with a sentence that looks like what you want kids to produce at each level. So you have an example. And we put those into place in literacy and math into our units of inquiry. We improved our classroom libraries and our level book sets to be in coordination with our IB units. And we added a digital reading component to our literacy. We increased our ability to assess kids with the FAST and ER assessments and Benchmark Informal Reading Inventory. The Benchmark allowed us, with kids who were performing low, to have detailed analysis of what kids are doing and what teaching they need. We added, we continued our PLCs, as was weekly meetings in reading or math, and we added our reading intervention and EL teachers to those groups. This year, we've added our new district curriculum framework for kindergarten. We added PALS and phonics. One of the things we evaluated at the end of last year was that we needed a stronger phonics and word program at Susan Lindgren. So not only did we add PALS in KN1, we added Words Their Way, which is supplemental word work in grades two through five. We maintained our home reading program and we continued to maintain and improve our reading materials. In the fall and winter, we analyzed our reading and our literacy programs. We looked at the stats and put a focus on black and brown students. We did that with MAP and FAST with a focus on black and brown students. We actually took pictures of the black and brown students and followed their story of each one of them. We decided to, that our discipline data was disproportionately black and brown, and we started a program where if students have repeat referrals, we make a behavior plan. So I sit down with our social worker and the teacher and our behavior assistant and we make a behavior plan for that student. And then we created bus charts. We had essential agreements for the bus, what you do when you get there, and we set charts for the routes that had significant challenges. And we have pairs riding the two buses that have the most difficult children on them. I'll just say the most aggression on them. And that's settled down completely, so we're pleased with that. We implemented a new teacher observation protocol, which has a really strong equity element to it. So every time I'm sitting down with new teachers, we're talking about what they're doing to make their rooms be equitable and to have culturally relevant instruction. We've used our Equity Coach. One of the things that's kind of interesting is the Equity Coaches meet and mentor some of our teachers and then they bring that information to team leaders. And one of the things that they've brought to us is the way students speak in class. So in black culture, call and response is very common. Teacher asks a question, student expects to answer out loud. And in our culture, in white culture, that's not expected. So it feels out of place. What we expect is library culture. Teacher asks a question, kid might raise their hand. So our Equity Coach is now teaching us to have, to teach kids that there are library times when we don't answer and there's call and response times. And then everybody knows when they should talk and when they shouldn't. And it's created a different environment in many of our classes. And we created Building Bridges, which is a plan. We took the kids who had been referred to the office last year and they're assigned another adult who sees them every day and just talks with them and says hi for a minute and moves on with their day. And we know that that's had great success, causing kids to do better. As far as next steps, this hasn't had feedback from anybody else, so I will just say I own it. But to me, these are the things we need to do to improve. We need to increase our staff capacity to teach reading well. And if we follow the Read Well by Third Grade Plan, which is now almost a year old, we should get there. We need to improve our ability to reach all kids, to make the curriculum.
Just to, that first one, is that increase the capacity of the staff that you have or increase staff?
No, increase the capacity of our staff.
Of your existing staff?
Yes.
Okay.
The plan is probably, well, the plan is an A and we need to get so that we're delivering an A plan. And I will say we're not there yet. It's a very thoughtful, very deep plan for what we need to do to teach kids how to read. We need to learn better how to do culturally relevant instructions so that it's accessible to all kids. And we need to figure out how to increase time on task in small groups. We know the kids who are struggling don't seem to benefit from whole-class instruction. They benefit from small group instruction. And we need to figure out ways to increase time, both in reading and math, for small group instruction. And I think we need to increase time for those kids, period, to extend their day, week, and our year. So we're going to explore options for doing those things. And I have two minutes of slides going at three seconds. I don't think I'll say much. According to our survey last spring, 97 percent of our students said they liked Susan Lindgren. 99 said they liked their teachers. 90 said they liked to read. 84 percent said they liked math. 95 percent said they feel safe. And by the way, we take the kids who said they don't feel safe and interview them and find out why they didn't, create some interesting stories. But most of them are something like, Billy stole my lunch two years ago. And that sticks with them. Things stick with kids, so we really have to fix situations so they're not like that. It's not that they're getting beat up or something, but something happened that made them feel uncomfortable and then we try to fix them. This is construction. That's the electric line that's driven us crazy and you've probably heard about. That's like a bridge holding it up there going across. They're installing the floor. Stalling the roof. That's what it looks like today. It's about two days left of bricks and it'll be done on the outside. And then they have to finish the inside, which should take about a month. This is the front door. They're pouring the slab by the new front door. Yesterday, they put in the fence. These are artworks Carol Humphrey caused our kids to do. That's a kindergartner. These are Eagle Bluff. We had three food drives this year for staff. The Sliding Hill is very popular at Susan Lindgren. And we've been doing dance residencies with classes this fall for this winter. So these are fourth graders.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Ken?
Okay, Frank. Thank you for all this great information. I do have some questions around, let's start with the English learners, individuals. So typically, in my mind, I think of an English learner as Spanish, Hispanic learner. But when I look at the numbers and I see that the Hispanic population grew 1 percent, but our ELL grew 3 percent, I'm wondering, is there a black population that is English learners that, can you speak to that at all in your school?
Yes. Yes. We have, actually, our English learners are coming from 18 countries and their parents speak 33 languages. And we have a significant number of Somali kids and a significant number of kids from other countries in Africa.
So which brings me into the black population numbers are dwindling or in a decline. Are, hm?
Scores.
Not the enrollment.
Scores.
Scores. Not the enrollment. I'm really thinking towards the score and trying to understand the dynamics of what's going on there. And so that kind of can address my question about the, the scores are at a decline and it could be English learners coming in and we're addressing that issue at a different aspect, I suspect. Because it's looked like you had some points in here on initiatives you're taking for English learning.
We increased our staff. We've gone from in two years from 65 to 105 EL students. So last year, we increased our staff and then we started over this fall. We didn't get it increased until December and that's happened two years in a row. We've set it up for next year. Our new superintendent has made sure we're going to have those teachers moving forward so we won't have to start, start back at service for 65. So we started shorthanded in the fall in that sense and didn't serve our 3, 4, 5s as well. Typically, we're putting our emphasis on primary age kids and until we got new help hired, it wasn't getting help in 3, 4, 5.
Do you anticipate you'll be able to retain that person, that you were able to chain the second person?
Yes, we've been told that. And we got it without having to lobby, which was really nice.
Okay. Other questions? Karen?
So Frank, you touched a little bit on the Building Bridges project, which to me is assets in action. Thank you so much. But can you give some more details about how many kids and how many adults and what's the frequency in the day? the frequency in the day?
It's, it's an attempt to communicate every day. And I thought I wrote down the name of kids, number of kids. Yeah, sixty-four kids. And it's distributed about thirty-five staff members. So we literally put up their pictures and went through them and said, who will see this one? So I'm teaching in the room next door, I'll catch them every morning, that kind of thing. Music teacher gets in touch with three kids every morning before school. Sometimes it's in the middle of the day because it works out with their lunch, but they're just touching base. It's another relationship. It's a project that came from community ed, actually, a long time ago. So.
I just remember, you know, superintendent did say that kind of thing once in this school. Jim and then Joe. Jennifer?
So Frank, so I'm looking at like your next steps and, I'm sorry, you were saying you own those or basically, or is that in kind of conjunction with your staff or these are your observations or?
That one slide is mine as opposed to the others, which are other people as well.
Got it. And are these next, so is it your thought then? Well, a couple of things. A, are these, are things that you are going to be able to do, you think, I mean, and accomplish? These next steps and then if, if yes, I mean, is that, I mean, is this towards then hopefully improving the achievement gap? Is that?
Yes, that's specifically what they're about. The first two are very consistent with what the district is doing and where Kerry is trying to take us. The third one is a hard one and I think we're probably in a better position than we were. And IB, the notion of departmentalizing is not well received. The classroom teacher must be the primary teacher in reading and math. And so the idea of suddenly you take the high kids, you take the low kids, is not well received in IB. We can do it to some degree. We haven't, but I think we need to look at that. Because we need to look at how to get small group for the low kids.
So is that, I don't understand, is that somewhat of a criticism then of IB? You think that might be more effective to be able to do that? Or is there a, I mean, somehow is that hindering?
I don't, I won't say it's hindering because I think till this point in our, in our growth as a school, we needed to be where we are. I just didn't want us to become a departmentalized school to start with because of the age of our kids. But I think there are some options about having time, maybe it's twenty minutes a day instead of the whole math time, which is an hour, where we have a small number of lower performing students with a teacher and a higher number of higher performing students with somebody else to give it more attention to those low performing students. And we just have to explore ways to get small group. I think we have to explore small group in classes too. That's been, that's hard in math. It's not hard in reading. In math, kids, well, they have what's called math anxiety. And so they get to a problem and they're afraid they're going to get it wrong. They're either going to get it right or wrong. It's no halfway. Whereas if you read a sentence, you get most of it, somehow you're rewarded for that. You get it wrong in math and there's anxiety. And suddenly, with twenty-five kids in the room, it's hard to manage. So it's hard to sit with five kids and work on their math while twenty others are out there. And that's, that's the task that's hard. It's harder in math. I couldn't tell you what happened in math. I sat here a year ago and I remember a board member saying, what did you do in math? I wish we could replicate that. And here we are a year later, kind of looking like we didn't replicate it too much. So we think we did the same thing, but we didn't. We didn't get the same results, so.
And finally, just, yeah, just kudos to you. You could maybe share some tips with the Vikings or something, coming off the DL a couple of times this year to continue to work hard, so, you know, thanks. I know it's more.
I almost put it in our next steps. Or what we did in fourteen, fifteen, titanium too. It was fun going through the airport spring break, is all I can say.
Joe?
Three things. The third thing is for Sandy to give an update on the constructions. I'll start with the first two, give her a chance to think about that update. So the first one is thank you for the food drives you did this year. I know on this most recent one, Step reported that you guys collected four hundred forty-one pounds of food, so thank you very much for, for doing that. The second thing is a quick piece of feedback on the RAS Kids subscriptions. I know my son has been doing that. That's the online home reading app through, that he's been working on through the iPad. He likes it. I got feedback from another parent about a kid, their kid was not that into reading until they did RAS Kids. Because it basically turned it into a competition or a game type thing, getting to new levels. And so this kid has been really turned on by this, this app and has been really excited, excited to do it. So that seems like, at least from the small sample size, it's pretty, it's been pretty worthwhile. Have you, have you heard much other feedback about the RAS Kids or?
We know that some kids love it and some kids don't. And we got surprisingly positive feedback about Hispanic families in the summertime actually reading it. So we felt like just for that alone, it was worth the price of, of doing it.
Great, thank you.
Bruce, and then I'll go to Ken, just since he's.
Frank, I want to thank you. I just know how much work you put into that school and Susan Lindgren is, my kids went there, so it's still one of my favorites. But in your, your school improvement plan, I just want to compliment you. I mean, all our schools do it, but I want to mention it because it's equity aligned with, and then the bullets that you put out there. The World's Best Workforce Plan, which I think is conceptually wonderful, just woefully underfunded. Reading Well by Third Grade, that's part of World's Best Workforce Plan. Teacher and principal evaluation plans are powerful within our district. Q Comp, I can't say enough good about that, just because I think teachers are woefully underpaid and the more money we can get them, the better off, I think we are. The Career in College readiness, you say, why do that for kids at that age? And, and it's because that's, that's part of what is really important, to get them prepared for what's going to happen to them in the future. And of course, IB, PYP, I'm your biggest fan in that area. So thank you for all the, well, maybe, maybe we both are, but it's.
I want to give credit to all the principals for that slide and Prachi, because all of the principals together created that slide, so.
Well, and I want to thank you and thank all of you for the great work that you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Ken had another question or two, four, three?
Okay. These questions are going to be all over the place, but it's some thoughts I had. So on the equity piece, do you know the percentage of how many, you identified how the Equity Coaches are showing the difference, where there's cultural differences of learning? Do you know how many or percentage of your teachers that are receiving Equity Coaches versus the bills?
I don't. I just, I know anecdotal from three places where they've brought things to the table. That's all I know. It's ATPPS and I don't know who's going where for that. I just know they had a choice. And I know that our Equity Coach is going to provide our staff meeting this coming week. And our whole staff is going to do this, library voices versus call and response voice. How to, how to manage that in your classroom?
That's good.
So.
Great. The other question is about your GT. It looks like GT went up twenty-six kids roughly. Are we doing anything, you know, to, to encourage and to help that ninety-five percentile learners?
We have point four in our billing right now, but Susan Lindgren, last Monday, next Wednesday, voted, the staff voted, I didn't want to move without the staff, to be the pilot school for total school culture, total, what's the word? Totals, the word is slipping my brain. Total School Grouping, Cluster Grouping, TSCG, Total School Cluster Grouping. And that is about, it's a GT program where you break your grade level into five levels of performance. And they don't start with test scores. They say, who are the high performing students? Who are next high? Who are average? Who are low average? Who are low? And then they look at test scores. Test scores can cause a child to be included higher, but not excluded higher. So if you're up here, you don't have a high score, you stay there, if you're a high performing student. So one thing this does is increases black and brown students in gifted identity. But it also, as they're doing these groups in the classrooms, if you have the high, you don't have the high average. So the teacher over here has high average, but not the high. And they know that these high average kids rise to the occasion. So you end up with more kids ninety-five or higher that way. And they know that by limiting the number of groups that you teach, you get more small group instruction. And so you reduce the number of kids in the low group as well. You get higher performance for everybody. And we go to two days of training next week and we'll put it in place for next fall.
We, we did hear a presentation from Kerry Ross on that meeting or two ago, so.
We're pretty excited. I only had, I did thumbs up, thumbs to the side, thumbs down. I only had one thumbs down in the whole school out of thirty-five people. So we're pretty, pretty excited about it.
Sure, go ahead.
The last one is, you had mentioned that there's issues on buses, certain routes. And you put people onto the bus so that reduced, is that a big issue for your school?
For those two buses it is.
Issues on buses, just those two buses?
In those two in particular, yeah.
Okay.
They're hard. There are buses with like sixty-five kids on the bus, so there's just no place to move. It's just packed. And it's concentrations of poverty and it's hard. So having a second adult on the bus is very helpful.
Does that also come over to your classroom then? Do you also see those typical same kids?
If the adult isn't there, you're standing at the door meeting them when they come in and Billy punched me, you know? That stuff, that's where it starts if you didn't have adults on those two routes. Makes a big difference. They come off calmly.
You have to adjust with that. Gotcha. Thanks.
But you said having the paras ride those buses had solved it or dealt with it?
Yep, yep.
Joe, I think I cut off your last question or you were going to ask, no, about construction or?
Uh, yeah, I would like, you know, Frank, Frank gave a brief snippet on the construction, but I, I would like to hear maybe a little more detail on the Susan Lindgren construction and what our expectations are for completion date. Please.
Thank you. We have, I think for Frank said in about a month, that's about what we know at this point. I mean, there's not detail as far as an exact date on when we're going to get completed. They're still in process. They've been making progress now with the other, you know, additions being done. There's more focus now on Susan Lindgren and, and the workers are doing the best that they can under the conditions and that's what we know at this point, but we anticipate within a month they should be done.
I could just tell you, I mean, I could tell you that the bricks will be done this week. And I can tell you that all the ventilation, all that tube work will be done this week. It's almost done. All the plumbing's in. Windows are going in tomorrow. So then we're talking cabinets and floors and ceilings and that stuff goes pretty fast.
So I'd assume with a May completion, we will not be using this space this school year? Or are you, do you have any sort of?
If we do, it'll be on an ad hoc basis. It's not going to be, somebody's not been waiting in the wings all year, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be crazy to move at this point.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Sandy.
And I've got a question. You said that you had focused on attendance and discipline data and were developing individual behavior plans for some students. Have you, one, two questions about that. One, do those behavior plans focus on keeping the kids in the classroom or in a learning environment, not out of school anyways? And second, do, is that making a difference so far?
I think it definitely makes a difference. Some, I will say as often as not, we're trying to find out what is it that's causing this kid to lose it? And is it predictable? So if it's math time, maybe somebody goes to help him with math. If it's a social skill thing, social worker will put that student in a group and work on those social skills. If there's some particular deficit, we try to give it to the kid, that kind of thing. And I will say, yes, I mean, I think our building feels good and I think it's, it's enough to keep our building feeling good.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? All right, thank you. I appreciate your presentation and hearing about Susan Lindgren again this year.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is about our strategic, is a strategic plan update and Superintendent Metz is going to tell us what happened. Last week was the beginning of the planning. We have two board members who participate and looking forward to the update.
Kerry, I may need some assistance with this to get me on track. So I think that should be fine.
You're plugged in. You're not projecting for some reason. You've got the blue cord in there. So try, make sure you're mirroring. That's the only one. That shouldn't happen.
Board members, while we're waiting, if you, are there people that would be available either, I think the twenty-second or the twenty-eighth of the two dates, of the three dates? The first one's this week and I don't think we can get much notice out. So Wednesday, the twenty-second or Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, either in that five thirty to seven or seven to eight thirty spot? Or those who are not available?
I would be available late on the twenty-eighth only, so the seven o'clock.
I don't, Julie, I don't have my work or evening calendar with me. I think I may be available late on the twenty-eighth, but I need to confirm that.
I gotta check my schedule duly, but I think I could be available early on Tuesday, the twenty-eighth.
Notice, so let's, I think I can only do the, I'm not even sure about that, on the twenty-eighth. I could do the later one. I'm thinking the seventh through the, the seven o'clock on the twenty-eighth, I'm hearing more people.
Yeah, maybe Nancy. So Cynthia, Cynthia, I'm looking at your sign, Cindy. Let's go with the twenty-eighth at seven o'clock. We had looked at the, the library, right? Or did we already do one at the library, the St. Louis Park Library?
I checked the library. That did, it's not available.
Okay. So one of these other locations. Lenox is central. Should we just choose Lenox? If you could maybe reserve one of the rooms at Lenox.
Yes. Do you have a preference? I'll talk to the facilitator, the facilities manager, and we'll get the best room.
That sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
Are we gonna give up on the connection?
We are. I'm just gonna give an oral report and I think I can do a pretty good job of explaining what I was planning to explain. I wanted to take a few minutes to give the board an update on the strategic planning process. And for board members and for those at home, we have begun the process of creating our next five-year strategic plan. It's very exciting. Something that I've been looking forward to for a long time and, and I have high hopes for the future. It's gonna be a really fun process and I think we're in a perfect position as a school district to, to, you know, we hear, we hear the term good to great. We are a very good school district, if not a great school district already. I think with a carefully thought out and well orchestrated five-year strategic plan, our future is very, very bright. And before we get too far down the road, I wanted to take a look back at the last five years. We had a five-year strategic plan that, that we are wrapping up. And we wanted to take a few minutes to look back and celebrate all the good work that was done in the last five years. The previous strategic plan had three strategies. The first strategy said we will continually evaluate and align current district-wide curriculum and if necessary, develop new curriculum so that all students demonstrate achievement in our mission and strategic objectives. We've made a lot of progress over the last five years. The, for those at home, the strategy is broken down into different results. Results are smaller steps that needed to happen for us to reach the goal. And a variety of strategies were laid out and I'm just gonna read through them quickly. The first strategy from five years ago was that S L P has a district-wide system of clear roles and responsibilities specific to curriculum development, implementation, review, and oversight. We've made a lot of progress in this area. One of the first things that happened after I became superintendent is I hired a director of teaching and learning, Kerry Ross, and she has really helped guide this curriculum development process. Another result from five years ago was that S L P has adopted a district-wide curriculum improvement cycle that ensures the curriculum incorporates standards and outcomes essential for students achieving the mission and strategic objectives. Again, we've made a lot of progress in this area. Board members have heard a lot over the last two years about our work to embed state standards in our current curriculum. Another result was that the knowledge and skills and attitudes reflected in the strategic objectives have been integrated into the district's curriculum across grades and content areas. This was a high priority five years ago, that our curriculum was aligned K-12 from elementary to middle school to high school. And then it was aligned across the district. So if you were in a third grade classroom at any one of the four elementary schools, the curriculum would be aligned. Again, a lot of progress has been made in this area. More to go, but a lot's been done. Another result in this area was that S L P uses a district-wide system of interventions designed for all students to achieve our mission and strategic objectives without demographically predictable results. In school language, sometimes we call this tier two or tier three. Tier one is the initial classroom instruction. And then for students who aren't yet successful, we have interventions, tier two and tier three. This year, we've spent a lot of time redesigning our reading intervention program district-wide that will be unveiled in the fall. So tackling our interventions and making sure they're aligned is also important and we've made progress there. Result five, S L P uses a district-wide system of enrichment opportunities that ensures all students are intellectually challenged. I believe we made progress there as well. You heard just a few minutes ago that Susan Lindgren Elementary School is joining and being part of a new project that's being hosted through Purdue University that has a gifted and talented angle on elementary schools. The middle school has added many numerous electives. And the high school is as rigorous as you could possibly be. So we've made progress in that area as well. Result six, five years ago, said S L P has structures and systems to support ongoing professional learning for all staff that is aligned with the district's strategic objectives and enhances student learning. You'll remember our new calendar the last couple of years has allowed for two full days of professional development for our staff during the school year. That's been key because in order for us to align our curriculum and standards K-12 and across grades, we need to get our teachers together at certain points, from all schools together at one place at one time. And having those two full days of professional development has allowed us to do that. We've also had a summer institute last summer and will again this summer that allows for teachers to come together for additional professional development. And finally, result seven, S L P has a district-wide system to review and incorporate culturally responsive and inclusive curriculum in the classrooms. We have work to do in this area. And you're gonna see in our next strategic plan that this is, that strategy is gonna, that result is gonna be heavily emphasized. So all in all, if we look at strategy one, which was heavily focused on curriculum and standards, I think we've made good progress and there's a lot to celebrate. I wouldn't say we've completed it by any means. And that strategy is gonna remain in our next plan. It's gonna be slightly reworded and a little bit tweaked. But in general, strategy one will remain. Five years ago, we had a strategy two. Strategy two said, we will do whatever it takes to ensure our structures and systems align with beliefs, mission, and strategic objectives. And there were several results under strategy two. Let's just go through them quickly. Result one said the facilities study is complete and the school board has approved a utilization plan for educational and financial benefits. And that study was fully completed. Far ago, not recently, but way back in the beginning of this plan. Result two said, teachers are using twenty-first century technology to engage students and accelerate their achievement in grade seven through twelve, language arts, social studies, math, and science. Now, we've made progress in this and again, we have a ways to go, but from five years ago to today, now we have teachers using more and more technology all the time. We're now a wireless district for the first time, so anywhere you go in any of our classrooms, we have wireless access. We implemented a digital learning platform this fall called School-Agey, which the board has heard about. And we're, we've added two tech integration specialists. They are teachers on special assignment that spend their day hopping from classroom to classroom assisting teachers as they learn to use technology as an instructional tool. So a lot was done in the last five years in this area. Devices come up often, digital learning devices, and that's gonna appear in our next strategic plan, but a lot of work was done over the last five years in this area. Result three is exactly the same as the result two, except it focuses on middle school. Result four is exactly the same as the previous two results, except it focused on elementary school. So again, a lot of work has been done and it's set the stage for future work. Result five said, in order to provide enhanced customer service, technology is used to improve efficiency and effectiveness of district and school business practices. Five years ago, we didn't have most of the things I'm going to mention. Now we have an electronic system called AppleTrax that helps us electronically post jobs and complete the hiring process online. We now have an electronic substitute teacher system, so when a teacher needs a substitute, they enter it in a system. Substitutes are communicated with electronically and those jobs are filled electronically. We have, we have new systems that weren't here five years ago. Our current task, which you will see, is now we're working to get them all to talk to each other and work with each other. And that's the next step. Result six was that the district has approved a plan for improved instructional delivery methods and configurations that maximize district resources. This plan was approved. So this is way back when moving from K-six elementary schools to K-five schools, creating a middle school instead of a junior high. This was all part of the strategic plan five years ago and that has been completed. Result seven said the district is implementing the plan for improved instructional delivery methods and configurations that maximize district resources. This aligns with the previous one I just read. Result six was creating the plan. Result seven was completing the plan. Result eight, the strategic plan is approved by the school board, communicated to the stakeholders, and implemented and reviewed annually. That was done five years ago and each year, when you do a strategic plan, you're required to come back each year and review the work and give an update on what was accomplished in the previous year. And finally, result nine, I guess there is more than nine. There's actually, we'll keep going here. The school district is attracting, retaining, and developing a quality staff that is increasingly reflective of our diverse student population. We haven't made progress in the second part of that sentence. We have not been able to hire a more diverse staff. But we are attracting, retaining, and developing a quality staff. So that result has been partially met, in my opinion, with more work to come in the next strategic plan. Result ten, the district resources are allocated in a way that supports equity of outcomes across our diverse student population. We've made a lot of progress in this area and the public doesn't necessarily see funding move from one source to another, but we've been moving funding to work toward more equitable outcomes. The board is aware of some of this. For example, we've hired a community liaison, Tarabi Jama, who has been at some of our meetings. We've hired three equity coaches at this point with two more to come in the, in the next school year. So funding has been moving and we're gonna continue to do that. Result eleven, policies, procedures, and practices are aligned with our beliefs and mission to help create an institutional culture that supports achieving our strategic plan. This is something that I'm the most excited about in our next plan, which you'll see in a minute. But the strategic plan has a set of core values in it. And the core values are meant to be your guiding rudder. Every decision you make, you should be looking at those core values and saying, does this decision align with our core values or doesn't it? And you'll see in a minute that we tweaked our core values. And the idea here, I believe, five years ago, was to make sure that our policies, procedures, and practices truly align with our beliefs, which are now called core values. So that was strategy two. Strategy two had to do with systems and structures. And strategy three, five years ago, said, we will partner with our community to foster a shared commitment and contributions necessary to achieve our mission and strategic objectives. So this is the community involvement, community partnership strategy. And there were several results. The first said, the percentage of high need preschoolers participating in readiness programs is increasing annually. We've actually made a lot of progress in this area. We have aligned all of our early learning programs. And we've combined programs so that if you go into one of our earlier learning classes, there are special needs students, there are non-special needs students, there are paying customers, there are non-paying customers, all mixed together. And we have included as many high needs preschoolers as we possibly can in our classes while maintaining a balanced budget. So that, that one I gave a score of one, as you can see, because we've made a lot of progress there. Result two was the community uses resources and opportunities to meet our strategic objectives. The community supports us to a very high degree. It's really even hard to put a, a number on it or to score it because there are so many community-school collaborations and so many ways that the community supports us. I go from meeting to meeting to meeting in the community. Just today, I was at Rotary and I was approached by Rotary members who work in collaboration with our school foundation. And they had ideas and they had funds. They were bringing with their ideas of how they can support us. So we can't say enough about the support we get from our community. Result three, families are being connected to programs and resources that support learner success. One of the key tasks, as I understand it, five years ago, was to create a community resource guide where many of the opportunities that are out there in the community could be pulled together into one source. And that's been done. It's online and there is now a fully operating community resource guide.
Lisa, does the community resource guide get refreshed like once a year or how does that work?
Um, yes, it's, it's actually run through the Family Services Collaborative now and it's on the Family Services Collaborative website. And somebody from the county goes in every year and updates it and calls all the places and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Result four, the community partnerships provide extended day and extended school year opportunities for high need S L P students. This one again is very hard to quantify because there are so many. Some are well-known, like the Meadowbrook Collaborative. Others are less well-known. We do not have extended day and extended school year opportunities for all the students, which would be wonderful if we could, but we have quite a few out there and they continue to operate. Strategy three, result five, said, community service opportunities exist and all S L P students participate. I wouldn't say all, but we're really close. In our elementary schools, three of the four elementary schools are international baccalaureate schools. And as international baccalaureate schools, there's an action component of being an IB school. So just by default, being in an IB school, you're gonna be involved in action. And in service opportunities. The middle school has a day of service where every single middle school student participates in a day of service. High school, it's a little more sporadic, but many of the groups and organizations, whether you're in band or an athletic team or choir or orchestra or theater, have a community service component. So we can't say that all, so we haven't completely accomplished it, but there's a vast array of community service opportunities that our students are exposed to. And finally, result six, said the community is intentional about creating and maintaining a culture of mutual respect and communication where we work together to ensure a high-quality education for all students. I feel like we're in a really good place right now. I get to go around from school to school, one of the things I really enjoy about my job and around the community and meet with all kinds of different groups of people. And I feel like the culture of mutual respect and communication is very, very high right now. And it's very motivating to me to be part of it. So if you look back at all the things that were part of the plan five years ago and take an authentic look at what's been accomplished, a lot has been accomplished. I don't think we can say that the, all the strategies and all the results and all the strategies were accomplished, but a lot was. And so we are not starting over with a brand-new strategic plan. We're taking our current plan and we're doing a fair evaluation of what we did accomplish and we're planning out the next five years. We're not starting from scratch. We're starting from where we are today. When I met with the core strategic planning team last week, I also outlined some key issues that I see in our future as a school district. Because I wanted to give the core team members some background into what's in my mind about what we're facing as potential issues in the future. And, and here they are. All of these are potential issues, but they're also opportunities. And we can capitalize on them too. The first one is that our student population appears to be growing. The first one is that our student population appears to be growing and growing more diverse each year. And that's a big benefit to our students. You have heard tonight in the Susan Lingan Report and you've heard all year long that we are working as hard as we can so that someday we do not have demographically predictable results in our student achievement. And we are going to get there. And we're, I'm very hopeful, I see good signs every day that we're on our way. But that needs to be on our list of future issues. It's very, very important that we find success in that area. Another future issue is that our enrollment has been steadily increasing. Seven years in a row, our enrollment has increased. We've gone from forty-two hundred students K-12 seven years ago to this fall, I believe we'll cross over forty-seven hundred students. So about five hundred more students in our district K-12 next fall than there was back when this plan was written. So that is a steady, slow increase. When I talk to the people at the city of St. Louis Park, they say more to come because they see the city growing. The city will be larger ten years from now than it is today in terms of population. We don't know exactly how many of those will have children, families will have children that are at school age, but there's no doubt the city will be bigger ten years from now than today. So we need to prepare for that growth to continue. I don't think we have a clear and comprehensive digital learning plan yet. We've made progress, but we need to make more progress in that area. And so I called that out to the core team, something to look at. I believe we still have some communication issues that we can do better in. We do not have the capacity to translate all of the documents that we need translating to keep up on our website, to take part in the world of social media, to the point that we'd like to. And most importantly, to build relationships with and learn from our underrepresented families. So this is an area where we could definitely grow and improve over the next five years. It's a great opportunity for us. Another future issue is that our curriculum is not yet fully aligned to the Minnesota State standards. We've made a lot of progress. We're focusing on secondary math and elementary language arts and are working hard at it, but that's going to take multiple years for us to accomplish that. We're farther along today than we were a year ago and next year we'll be farther along than we are today. And then finally, we need to be an excellent employer. Our business and human resource functions have improved greatly and we need to improve more. I would like to get to the point someday, I'm looking at our HR director, Rick Cryer, and he and I agree on this, where we can enter contests and be selected as one of the best employers in the Twin Cities. I don't think we're that far away, I don't think it's an unreasonable goal at all. And this is an opportunity for us and I think we can do it. And then the last future issue that I outlined was that our financial stability is good right now and our support from our community is strong. But we can't take that for granted. Every day, everywhere I go, I'm trying to build the brand of St. Louis Park and, and so are the employees and so are the parents and families and the board members. The community support is unparalleled and we'd never take it for granted. We're always listening and always trying to learn. So as I said, a group of about thirty people gathered and there's a picture that I don't know if the people at home can see, but they were all smiling, I'll just tell you, after two hard days of work and happy to be part of the group that took our last five-year plan and began updating it for the next five years. There are names on the bottom of this page that are very difficult to read, but I can tell you that the people that came were from all walks of life. The youngest was fourteen, the oldest was eighty-one. They represented the students demographically exactly. They were some employees, some not employees, some parents, some not parents. It was a great group, most of them were new. We had some tried and true people that the board members would know and recognize, but we had, most of them were new to the group. A lot of them were new to the group. And that added a lot of pizzazz. So it was a great group. And they spent the first couple of days updating some of our strategic plan and I'm going to show you some of those pieces right now. First of all, the mission. We looked at our mission statement, we didn't change it very much, but we tweaked it a little bit. And it's in your packet that you got at your table tonight. I need to say that the core team, this group of folks that gathered together to do this work, all of this work is done by consensus. Every single person in the room has to agree before a change is made. And it took us a long time to work through one or two words of changes, but we accomplished it. And so we need to honor the work that they did. So this, none of this can be changed without unanimous agreement by the core team. In the end, this work that you're seeing now for the first time, some of you, is going to be coming to you in a final version and the board will, it'll come to you as a recommendation to accept. For now, it's still a work in progress, but the mission statement was changed a tiny bit, I'm going to read it for those at home. As a caring, diverse community with a tradition of putting its children first, we will ensure all students attain their highest level of achievement, prepare all students to contribute to society, offer high-quality opportunities for lifelong learning, provide multiple pathways to excellence, challenge all learners to meet high standards and provide a safe and nurturing environment that energizes and enhances the spirit. Now, most of that is, is our old plans, our old mission statement, a few new words have been added. And you're going to see a theme here as we go through the rest of these slides. Then we turned our attention to the strategies. Now you remember there were three strategies in our old plan. There are going to be four in our new one. The first three are the same as they were in the old plan with just a little bit of tweaking. So strategy one is now going to read. Grounded in our belief that all students can achieve our mission, we will continually evaluate and systematically implement student outcomes by aligning instruction, curriculum and assessment in a culturally relevant manner. Five years ago, this one read, it was very much focused on curriculum. Now you'll noticed, now you'll notice it's focused on aligning instruction, curriculum and assessment in a culturally relevant manner. And it's grounded in a belief that all students can achieve our mission. So much of it is the same as five years ago, but some of it is different in an important way. Strategy two. Again, much the same as last time with some important differences. We will align our structures and systems to our core values and develop and support all employees in order to achieve our mission and mission outcomes. So the, five years ago, it spoke to aligning structures and systems. This year, we're aligning them to our core values. And we're talking about, we're reaching down a little further and talking about how we're going to bring our employees, all employees, how we're going to help them and train them and give them the skills necessary to make this happen. Strategy three. Again, similar, but a little bit different in an important way to five years ago. We will collaborate with our diverse communities authentically and systematically to build collective ownership and accountability to achieve our mission and mission outcomes in accordance with our core values. So this is a more focused strategy, focusing on our diverse communities and building relationships and accountability with them. And then we added a fourth and brand-new strategy that says, we will ensure that our facilities are consistent with the needs of our learners and our community. We have some facility needs that are on the horizon and the strategic planning core team recognized that and added a strategy to address that. So we're moving ahead with these four strategies. Then we went through our core values and we updated them and we did that in an important way too. Not many word changes, but slight word changes that make big differences. So I'm going to just read through our core values and for those at home, this is our guide to live by. Everything that we do, we should be comparing to these core values and saying, does this align to our core values or doesn't it? One of our staff had a great idea, which was to put the core values on the back of our name tags so that we can look down at that and say, does this align with our core values or doesn't it? So here are our core values. We believe that everyone has equal intrinsic worth. We added the word equal, it wasn't there five years ago. We believe that we will enhance the healthy development of each learner by engaging and supporting families and communities. We believe that high expectations challenge everyone to higher levels of achievement. We believe that through persistent effort in an equitable environment, everyone can achieve maximum performance. We believe that lifelong learning is essential to the individual's quality of life and the vitality of the community. We believe that everyone has the capacity and responsibility to contribute to the well-being of others. We believe that respect of self and others is fundamental for a strong, healthy community. And we believe that high-quality education creates opportunities throughout an individual's life. There's two more. We will, we believe that embracing individual differences enriches a community. And we believe that hopes and dreams inspire and motivate people to invest in themselves and their community. I can tell you that the core values really guide me. I mean, it's really, as a superintendent, it's my job and my mission to live my work-life according to these core values. And that the rest of the organization follow and do the same thing. And I'm not exaggerating to say we need to use these core values as a guide for all of our work. We also added some strategic delimiters this time. This was not part of our plan five years ago. These are things that we're saying we're not going to do and we decided to make them public. We will not adopt any new program or service unless it is consistent with and contributes to our mission and is accomplished by effective implementation. Two parts to that, one is we get inundated all the time with new ideas that we should try. And we need to make sure before we start anything new that it aligns with our mission and that we've provided the appropriate professional development to make it a success. Second, we will not accept any behavior or practice that is in conflict with our core values. And third, we will not allow past practice to limit the consideration of new ideas. So we're going to hold each other accountable. We can't say, well, this is the way we've always done it because that's one of our strategic delimiters. So next steps. There are some meeting dates that I'm putting up here. Each of the four new strategic objectives has a team built around it called an action team. Each of the strategies, I should say, each of the four new strategies has a team built around it called an action team. And those action teams are going to take the strategies and they are going to build the building blocks, the pieces that over the next five years must be accomplished for that strategy to be fully realized. They are going to have three days of working, the action teams are going to work on April twenty-third, May thirteenth and May twenty-sixth. And then they're going to come back to the core team and present their drafts of their work. And the core team's going to give them some feedback and some suggestions. Then the action teams are going to go back and work for two more days and finish building the building blocks or the steps of each strategy. And they're going to come back and present to the core team on June sixteenth. And the hope is that the core team will accept the work of the action teams on June sixteenth. And then on June twenty-second, the core team will be standing here in front of you, at least some of them. And they'll be presenting the products, the final products to you in the hopes that you will accept them. A quote at the bottom here says, never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world, indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. I have great hope for St. Louis Park, I have great hope for the school district. I think the changes that the core team made in the mission and the strategies and the core values were well-done. The action teams are being put together as we speak and will begin their work. And the board will be getting regular updates as we proceed from now through the end of June, just like tonight, giving you updates on how the work is going. So you should be informed all the way along and, and by June twenty-second, we'll be here presenting the final work. So I can't thank the core team enough. They did a very good job their first two days, they have more work ahead. Some long days and some long hours, but they truly care about the school district and about the community of St. Louis Park. One thing I should mention was, that I forgot to mention is, once the, once the board adopts the strategic plan, then it becomes my work to make sure it gets done. So it's my job to assign work, move money around if I need to and accomplish what we say we're going to accomplish. I stood before the core team and said, when I, when we come back a year from now to give you the first year's update, I'm serious about showing that some work was done. And after year two, more work will be done and after year three, more work will be done. And, and I'm committed to making sure that whatever this plan says we're going to do in the next five years, that we're going to actually do it and do it in a very good way. And I'm really looking forward to the, to the challenge of making that happen. So with that, I'll stop and answer any questions you may have.
Great, questions from the board? No questions.
I should say, we talked a little bit about this beforehand and Karen and Bruce are the two board members who are participating. Anything you two want to add to the discussion of the plan?
What, what I'd like to say about this, I came out of it energized, brain tired, but very energized both days. And, and I actually found a children-first asset to go with this. Asset twenty-eight, integrity. And I, I really am very pleased that the process of consensus decision-making was filled with integrity. We had an excellent facilitator in Susan Hints. The people who participated and at some point, I hope we do a spotlight on them and, and name them publicly. But the passion, the energy, the emotion, the intellect, it was all held and respected and it was balanced so that all of the important viewpoints could be heard, understood and acted upon and it was done with great integrity. So it's, it's a great process and I'm very proud to be part of it, thanks.
Great, Bruce?
I'll second that and I, I think Rob did a great job of describing what we did. But I want to give you three quotes that came, that I came out of the meeting with. The first one was, if you want to predict the future, create it. And a lot of, and that comes, that comes from Peter Drucker, that's an old Peter Drucker quote. But the, the idea was that this team came in to create the future for our district and they did it with a great deal of love and a great deal of passion. And, and it was, I wish you could have all been there. I, I, I think, I can't tell you what a great job this team did. The second one comes from our facilitator, Susan Hints, who's a former superintendent from the Osseo School District. And she said, the truth spoken with grace builds trust. And she differentiated. Truth spoken without grace causes dissent and, and a great deal of conflict often. Grace spoken without truth is deceptive. But when you put the two together, and they can't be done separately, as I've just said, the idea is, is that brings trust. And this group had a lot of trust, this, this was a wonderful group. And the last one, action says love more than words do. And they, in the- And in the discussion of our mission, this word "love" came up, and there's a discussion about being bold and putting the word "love" in our mission, like instead of a caring district, we have a loving district. And again, with all the trust and truth that was going on, and all the grace, we didn't include the word "love" because it's the actions. Our actions will prove our love for these kids and for all of our learners in the district. And so that piece that was added to our mission, by the way, all students, all learners are included in what we say and do. And then this last part, "A safe and nurturing environment," so nurturing was added, "that energizes and enhances the spirit." That was the, those were the words that were added, and it was exciting to be a part of that and to share some of that love, and if Chris Weaver is out there, I love you, man. The other thing that I want to say is that the idea of community, and Rob expressed who they were, I do think we should recognize the entire team because it was so representative of our school community, and one of these people was a student. She was an eighth grader. And when I first met her, we were introduced, and she said she was at the junior high. I said, "Oh, what do you teach?" after talking with her. And after she told me she was an eighth grader, I said, "Wow." I mean, she, what a representative of our kids. I mean, she was great. And the only reason I can even tell that story on myself is afterward, someone else made the same mistake. She's so impressive. She knew what to speak, how to say it, and when to be quiet, and she was just wonderful. And so it was fun, I mean, everybody was great, but she was outstanding, and that was really super. Second is the consensus idea. To go around the room and have 28 people say yes to changes, two things happen. One is you have to have a lot of trust for the group. The other is, our superintendent has to have a lot of trust to allow that to happen. And I was just impressed with the group and the trust that was generated throughout the whole thing. And finally, the passion, and that's why I wish you could have been there, just watching this group perform and the things we did and the things we created. Some people poo-poo strategic planning, say, "Oh, what is that going to do?" You heard what it does. Five years ago, we didn't have a lot of the things that we have here today, and a lot of them were the result of our strategic planning from then, and I'm looking forward to these next five years, because it's exciting, and this is a wonderful group of people who put it together. So I was grateful to be a part of it, and I'm grateful for Rob's courage to continue consensus. This was fun.
Great. Nancy?
Thank you, too. It was really nice to hear your take on your participation and what that experience was like, and really grateful for all the time people are putting in. Rob, I have a practical question, then I have a comment. How do you see the World's Best Workforce Plan fitting into the strategic plan, or not, or being, where's that going to fit? Because we need to do both.
Yep, it's a great question.
And if everything we do is built on the strategic plan, it seems to me we have to get that in there somehow.
Yep, great question. I have a World's Best Workforce Community Meeting tomorrow night, so I'm going to bring this strategic planning update and share that with them. I see it in a couple ways. We talked a little bit about that this morning when my cabinet met, and we, I'll do it in a couple of broad ways. First, the work of the district needs to be identified in the strategic plan. So the plan is the work of the district. I didn't want my work to be over here, and then the Strategic Planning Committee to create a bunch of work over here, and then we really have two sets of work. It needs to be one, so that it's all aligned, and that's going to happen, that's really exciting, that a lot of the work that's already ongoing in the district is going to line up with these strategies. So that's a perfect fit with the World's Best Workforce Plan. Some of the structures in Strategy 2, it talks about structures that need to be aligned to the core values, we have structures that are identified in the World's Best Workforce Plan, like, for example, the teacher evaluation plan is in there, the Read Well by Third Grade Plan is in there. So we can look at those plans and see if they align with the core values that are in the strategic plan. If they don't, we need to change the plans. So a district has all these kinds of plans, do they really align to the core values, or don't they? Probably the best alignment is in evaluation. So the strategic plan has to be evaluated. How will we know when we're successful? Besides ticking off things we've done, where will we see it in student results? And we're going to gather around the assessments that are already in the World's Best Workforce Plan, that we're already using as evaluators to see how well we're doing, and line those up with our strategic plan, so we don't have one set of evaluations evaluating one thing, and another set evaluating another thing. We're going to make sure that we have the same evaluations that are evaluating both plans. So I see the World's Best Workforce Plan fitting under the umbrella of the strategic plan, and I think it's a very nice fit. It won't be extra work.
Good, that's what I wanted to hear, and I don't know if, as the final plan comes to us, there'll be a cross-reference to the World's Best Workforce Plan, or specific, making that really kind of explicit within the plan itself.
That's a good point.
Go ahead, Karen.
So when I was going through that data book, and Jim, if you want to hold it up, it's huge, the elements of the World's Best Workforce Plan are scattered throughout, and I actually put a sticky note on each place that I found it.
In its basic form, the World's Best Workforce is simply a compilation of our other plans, to put it together. You can say it's nothing new. It is to put it all together, so they ought to be aligned, and this is a great way to be looking at it.
The thing I really like about the strategic plan is it has a soul. The World's Best Workforce Plan doesn't. It's a list of things to do, and it's a way to evaluate, and it's important, but it doesn't have a soul, but the strategic plan does. It talks about beliefs, and it ties the, you've seen the compass we use for our equity-based discussions, where there's the technical side of how do you best teach reading, and then there's the believing and the emotional side, is how do you engage the learner, and how do you get down to the heart of the matter, which is believing in every student. And I think this, well, I know, the strategic plan has both sides, and that's, I think, why I've kind of bonded to the strategic plan, because it has both sides.
Yeah, and I'd just like to second that. Just one of the core values that we changed rather significantly was the second one. And if you read it, the way it read before is, "We believe in families, and every child who shows up who's supported by their family, you know, this is cool, and we know we can be successful with that child." And we said, "Duh, what if a kid shows up without a supportive family?" And the example that I like to use was at the junior high, when we were doing their strategic planning a few years ago, I asked one little boy what he liked about the junior high, and he wouldn't lift his head, he just said, "It's better here than it is at home." And when kids walk in our door, and they don't have support at home, Children First says, "We are their families. We will give them the support they need to be successful." And that's part of the reason that got changed. And I was so proud of that group and what they did with that and how it got worded. We will support families, and we'll support communities, and those families and communities will support all of our kids, not some of them, all of them, and we will be families to those kids. And somebody says, "Whoa, you can't afford to do that." We can't afford not to do it. That's what we're here for.
I like that change. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I was just going to say, just as a comment, I think the strategic planning process is important. Some wise person, not me, but I can't remember who it was, said, "There's always more good to do." And with kids, there's always more good to do, and everyone always has an idea, and everybody always cares about the kids, and they come to you and us all the time. And what I love about this planning process is we're taking all those good ideas, and we're picking the ones we can do, and the ones that we're prioritizing, and the ones that we're going to put our focus on for the next five years, and that will help all of us do a better job for kids. So, you know, it's a great idea, and thanks for your work on it.
You're welcome. It's been fun.
All right. Well, thank you to everybody who's participating, and we will name them and thank them more publicly at the end of this process. But in the meantime, I'm sure Bruce will be sharing the love, along with Karen and everybody else. So we do love that they are participating.
It's not just me, Madam Chair.
No, Chris Weaver?
Nancy also used the word, and I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. We will, I'm glad to know that is continuing. The next thing on our discussion item is the 2016 Integration Grant request for approval. We did have this on at our last board meeting and had some short discussion, and, Rob, is there additional information that you want to present now?
There really isn't. This is just bringing it back for your approval tonight, so it's back in your board packet of information. Nothing has changed since two weeks ago, and I'm recommending that it be approved in the action part of the agenda.
Okay, are there any questions now? Okay, then we'll go on to our last discussion item, which is-
...policy development first reading, and it's the first reading of Policy 401, People's Employment Opportunity, and 402 on Disability/Non-Discrimination Policy. And Cindy, the way I look at it, are there any changes? Is that correct?
That's correct, and I apologize for not doing the strike through red underline as compared to the MSBA policy that I normally do. That was my error. But you are correct, after looking at it today, the only change that the MSBA policy online has is where we designate our Director of Human Resources, that was a blank, for us to make a choice on the MSBA form, so that's, we filled in the blank when we did ours. I did speak to Director Crier today, he does have something to add to one of the policies that came through legislation that is not in MSBA, so I might refer to him before we go for any discussion.
Has that changed something you can tell us now, or is it complicated, you need to, no, you can do it now? All right.
The MSBA model policy, sorry, I have to push this. The MSBA model policy looks like it dates back to 2008, but later on in 2008, at some point, the EEOC passed genetic information, anti-discrimination laws, and so as one of the protected class, named, race, creed, religion, others, we would have to add genetic information.
Okay. So that's in 402. That's in 402 on disability discrimination. I noticed it's-
No, 401.
Oh, 401.
That would be in 401.
Yes, okay. That one has been updated a few times since then, so they must not have caught that.
Chair Switzer, I just, when I left the room earlier, I went down to pull it, make sure that I had the right information, and they have not revised it through MSBA since 2008.
Okay, it's just our revisions, which probably just meant we re-adopted it.
Those are reaffirmed, yes.
Okay, got it. Joe, did you have a question?
Are we, did we consider, or are we planning on putting gender identity in that list, or is that normally captured under another item?
As far as I'm aware, now, under Minnesota statute, we would have references to, and I forget the exact, sexual affiliation, and there's other references which we may wish to put in under Minnesota law, which would be different than federal law.
Yeah, I don't think gender identity in terms of somebody living an expressed identity different than the biological one they were born with is yet in the law as a protected classification.
It's not going to, okay.
Right. Well, so that's not there yet, and these just reflect the state and federal law.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Now, our practice, come back at our meeting for action, so by then, we would ask, have a red light version, so you can see what our changes is put in there.
Chair Switzer, I'll work with Director Crier to get his wording and bring it back to you for a second reading.
Perfect, thank you. That ends our discussion agenda, and the next item- Is on our action agenda, which is, full of the 2016 integration grant. It was recommended that the school board approve the 2016 integration grant. Is there a motion for approval? So, Nancy? Second, by Ken, further discussion on this motion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. That's it for our action agenda, so we have communications and transmittals. Anybody got one to say? Bruce?
This is a message from our last AMSD meeting. AMSD is the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. Julie, Rob, and I, we're all there, and what we said is, this is critical right now on funding for our schools. The important thing is that, as we're in session now, the session will wrap up in the middle of May, right now, the House has proposed $157 million for education increases over the, pre-year, over the next couple of years. If all of that went to the formula, that would not even be 1%. The Senate has suggested 360 million, plus or minus a few million. If all of that went to the formula, it would be less than 2%. 1% is $174 million. Governor Dayton, the education governor, has suggested $695 million. Now, that's a nice chunk of change. We're not sure we can get all of it. We would love to have all of it right on the formula, but there are different cuts of that number. It is important right now, 3%, by the way, which is, we would like 3% to 4%, 3% would be $532 million. The way the governor has proposed it, though, is about 250-some-odd million would go for preschool for four-year-olds, universal preschool is what it's called. While we think that would be a great thing to have, passage in the House is going to be extremely difficult. What our point is, is that we would love to see at least 3% to 4% on the formula, something over $5 million. Right now, with 1% to 2% inflation that we're facing, we are losing ground. At 1%, we're certainly losing ground, at 2%, we're not gaining much ground. And so, since most of our budgets are tied up in people's salaries, it's difficult to even give raises to people when we're not being funded. And right now, we're still back at the 2003 level. This is unacceptable for a state that is the 11th richest state in the nation, that has a $2 billion surplus. The time is now. We need you, everybody out there in television land and everybody else, to contact your senators and representatives, and talk to everybody you know at the legislature to push for funding for the formula, for our kids, for our schools. We need your help right now, and this is vitally important to our schools, and to support the governor in over $500 million worth of increases for our schools. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Karen has given her asset earlier, so let's remember that. Joe?
STEP is putting on their Empty Bowls event on Thursday, April 23rd, at Westwood Lutheran For those of you who don't know what Empty Bowls is, it's basically a hunter awareness event for our local food shelf. STEP, they also do raise some funds, so it's good to come with your checkbook and provide a donation. There's a lunch and there's a dinner. The lunch goes from 11:30 to 1:30, and the dinner goes from 4:30 to 6:30, so I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Anybody else? The one thing I'll add is that, as we talked about earlier, we will have a listening session on Tuesday, April 28th, from 7:00 to 8:30 at Lenox. We'll put that on the website. We'll have a, our next meeting is, must be Monday, the 27th, so the day before that, which won't give us a lot of notice, but this will play again, plus we'll put it on the website. So hopefully, if you have anything you'd like to raise and talk to us in a less formal setting than sitting at a board meeting at a table like this, come to the listening session on the 28th at 7 o'clock. And if there's nothing else, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
From Jim? Did I hear a second? Second from Bruce? So all in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you.